So I'll call the ordinance committee meeting of July 30th, 2020. And in accordance with Governor Baker's executive order to hold meetings remotely in open meeting law, we are holding this meeting over Zoom. And we don't have any minutes to approve, so I'll go to public speak time. We have one person other than us in here, so NFD 881977, if you want to say anything, you can unmute and just give us your name and address for the record. Otherwise, feel free to observe. Okay. Seeing none. So tonight is plastics night. So we've had a chance to review the attorney's recommendations, and I think that what we can do is, Owen, you should be able to share your screen. Maybe we can just pull it up and we'll just go through the items that were identified one by one and see if we can't come to some resolution on this so we can get it into a public hearing.
Yeah, let me do that. Let's see. I think it's this. All right, can you?
Yep.
Let me just make this the full. I don't think there's anything sensitive here, but, okay, can you guys see this?
Yep.
Okay. So the one thing they asked about was, I think that we, I think we had talked about this, was that there was, they had a few definition questions, and I personally didn't have any disagreements with any of their definitions, except we had, I think we had talked about taking this out, the biodegradable bag. One second, let me just close the door here.
Yep.
There's a definition for a biodegradable bag that doesn't appear anywhere else, and I think we had talked about taking the word biodegradable out anyways because everything was supposed to be compostable, so I would move to, I agree and I would move to strike that unless either of you think we need to keep it.
That's fine. And just, you know, for the record, we don't have to, we don't have to vote on each edit. We can just, we can just delete it.
Okay.
But I, I mean, point taken. I, I think that that is fine since it doesn't appear anywhere else. It seems like that's not a big deal.
Uh, sorry. It looks like the sharing guts. Hold on, sorry. Maybe, is it here? You, I take it you no longer see the share, right?
No, we see it.
I can see it.
Oh, you could see this?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, wait, but that's not my thing. Hold on. That's my, you can see this now?
Yep.
Okay.
Moving.
All right. Let's see. Otherwise, I agreed with all, I personally agree with all the input they had on the definitions. They were mostly just kind of, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's.
Yeah.
Did either of you have any input on, on the definition section?
No, but one of the things was like, instead of having two definition sections, having one.
Oh, right. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Just like eliminate the shop, like just go right into shopping bag?
Yeah. I mean, I think that was, one of the questions was like, why have two definition sections?
Yeah, it was just kind of based off, you know, some of the, some of the examples I was working on, so I'm just looking for note paper to write on. So let me see if this, yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Here.
So just one definition section?
It might just streamline it and just make it easier to.
Sure, that's no problem. The question though is, the way it was parsed out was it was basically then, you know, general definitions and then all the bag stuff?
Right.
So would you want to put all the bag stuff in then with everything and then it would be, and then alphabetize it? So some of this stuff would get?
It wouldn't be together.
Yeah, it would get distributed, like throughout the definitions. Are you okay with that?
I mean, yeah, in theory, I'm okay with that. I, I do see some value of having all of those definitions kind of together.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What's your thought, Tom?
I was actually kind of thinking, like, given that, the, okay, so if you're someone and you're trying to figure all this out, and you're specifically trying to figure out bags, having all the bag definitions grouped together so you can, like, so that means that rather than having to skip across the list, I actually think makes sense. It's for like a point of, I mean, I don't think it matters legally one way or another and.
No, it doesn't.
From friendliness perspective, I actually think that might make it a little more accessible.
Right. And maybe instead of making its own section, I, I don't know. I mean, at this point, it's just about like flow, but, you know, just nesting it, you know, shopping bag definitions or whatever.
Yeah, I like that. We could put it between retail food establishment and straw. I'll just say shopping bag.
Right, just keep them together.
And then like, yeah, maybe double indent or parse something, I don't know. Would that work?
I think that, I think that would work.
Sure.
Great.
Okay. Okay, and then, they had, so, oh, they had also asked, so one thing that I sought to do is there were some slight differences because this covers like grocery stores and bags and then food establishments and how takeout is dealt with. That's why I had these two separate differences, because they were like, well, why do you have a definition for retail establishment or retail food establishment?
Right.
And from my perspective, I kind of sought to delineate between the two because what you might see happening in both, in either, might be slightly different behaviors. Although I guess technically, like, if you were to go to like, like Biggie's and get like bakery item or something like that, they may, they would still potentially have to be required to put it in a non-plastic item. So I guess there is some takeout happening in what we're calling just retail establishments. What are your, I don't know, what do you guys think about that?
I could see it, I can see it either way. You know, I don't know if, if we just say retail establishment, I mean, that does cover the gamut if we add those definitions in.
Right, so like if we kind of lumped the two together, basically?
Mm-hmm. What do you think, Tom?
I can't say I have a strong opinion on this.
Right. Neither.
I don't either. I mean, in my, in my brain, when I was doing a lot of this, I kind of kept these separate because it's almost kind of like three ordinances in one. Like, a lot of cities have done bags, a lot of cities have done takeout, a lot of cities have done straw, but this does all of it. And so.
Right.
I won't, you know, like, it, it, instead of kind of, they're merged in the sense that they're all dealt with in this ordinance, but they're not merged in the sense that they still get kind of their respective discussion.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess I could go either way. Well, I haven't re-looked at the language enough to see how much I might have, we may have to make other changes than in regards to, you know.
Why don't we just, why don't we leave it for now? Let's, let's leave it for now.
Okay. Okay, so getting into the more of the general prohibitions, I don't think they changed much other than adding language that makes it more legally sound. And they added this provision about the.
The receipt?
The receipt, which I think makes total sense.
Mm-hmm.
And I also think would resound with the consumer more because they understand that there is a charge there or might make them think, well, maybe I should start using usable bags.
Yeah.
Otherwise, a lot of this is just cleaning up language. I don't think they made wholesale changes that I could, that I noticed.
Yeah.
Anything from either of you guys?
No, I mean, that's what it looked like, you know, was basically they wordsmithed it a bit and, you know, like, I think, is the receipt one, is that what they matched from Cambridge?
Correct, yeah. One, yeah, it was, it was, yep.
Yep. So, yeah, and I, and I think that actually provision is a good, is a good catch, just, you know, because it'll make it really explicit to the consumer. And one of the things was, I think, there was a question about how many times a business could defer.
Yes.
And I feel like we had that discussion.
We did, and I thought, yes, we did, and I think it, I may have sent them, I may have just not put it in because I think, eh, what did we say? Was it twice or three ti, I forget how many times we said.
I'm having a hard time remembering. Tom, do you remember what we were thinking about as it related to deferments?
God, that was back when we met in person.
Exactly.
I could look at my notes and go from there. I think we might have said twice, like up to, like maybe up to two years. Is that, does it ring a bell?
That does sound familiar.
And I, and I would support that, so.
Yeah, I think, I think twice is fine. Because, yeah, because a year is a decent amount of time to, like, Northampton didn't do anything like, like that as far as, you know, giving that much of a grace period. So I think two years is reasonable.
And then something else I think we talked about, and I think they either didn't make it or we talked about it and we didn't, we, I mean, we hadn't finished the conversation. And I think that Dan Riss might have been at one of our meetings, but I think the penalties, frankly, are low. And I, and the, and the health inspector agreed with that too.
Okay.
Fifty and a hundred dollars was nothing. I mean, I think she was saying more like a hundred and three hundred.
Okay. Why don't we go a hundred for first offense, two hundred for second, and then three hundred for third, or, you know, because that three hundred, I think.
And then all subsequent, yeah.
Right. Because that's like the ceiling of, of our fines, right? Am I remembering that correctly?
Uh.
Three hundred dollars, or was it three fifty?
I don't remember, but I, I mean, for now, I think that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
And then something else that she had suggested, which basically makes these enforceable, because she was saying that, I talked to Bree, and she basically was like, well, you can give it all the fines you want, or she can give it all the fines she wants, but people will just choose not to pay them. So she suggested us introducing a clause that if people have outstanding fines, that their license can't be renewed.
Uh-huh. So, because we have in here, you know, civil action, Northampton District Court, so add, so if we, if we do add that, we're probably going to need to, unless, unless we can find specific language in the ordinance, like in another ordinance in the city that's done that, and I'm racking my brain right now to think if I can think of one, we'd probably have to have the, the, Mark, look, take a look at it, you know, have the solicitor take a, a look at that piece.
All right, so it would just be that one clause, though, right?
Just be the one clause. I mean, it would be, you know, quick. It'd probably only get billed for one hour.
So what would the language, would, would it be like, something like licensees with outstanding, sorry, I'm writing this, with outstanding fines will be ineligible for renewal unless fines are paid or something to that degree? So that.
I mean, I, I think that that embodies the spirit of what she would try, you know, what she would need. And so, and that would go after, so before the civil action to Northampton District Court and after the 21 days to the clerk.
Or, or, yeah, or even a section 5.4.
Or, oh, yeah, or its own section.
Specifically, what licenses are we talking about?
If it was, if it was like a grocery store, it would probably, I think that they have, have to have a, a specific license to, to sell food.
Yeah, this would be more for like a, like a restaurant, I think.
A restaurant could be a liquor license.
Or it might be, don't they have to, don't they need, don't they have a spec, doesn't the Board of Health have to sign off like on their kitchen license every year?
Yeah, that might just be one thing we want, we want to think about is just identifying the specific licenses so that the specific licensing, like, you know.
Authority.
Can be aware of this.
Are you otherwise generally in agreement with that sentiment, though?
I think it makes a lot of sense. I think it adds some teeth to this.
Okay, I could ask Bree specifically what and write up some language and then, do you want me to just send it directly to Mark or send it to you who would send it to Mark Salem?
If, yeah, send it, so I would say, once we get that language, send it to me because I'll have to send it through PEG.
Okay. All right, I'll do that, like, within the next 48 hours because I just have to double check on Bree. And I think that was really it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it seemed like that most of the changes were just, you know, wording changes and, and, you know, I don't know, like, I was able to get through all those and, and they all seemed reasonable to me. So I, I didn't know if anybody else had any ones that they didn't like or.
Do you want me to scroll back through for, for both of you? We can kind of like just do a quick.
Sure.
Nope, okay.
Now, as far as straws, I'm trying to remember if they made any, they just kind of changed the definition, right?
Correct, yes. Where was that? Let me find that. He did, yeah, he just, he just changed, he just changed the definition. I mean, there's a lot of notes here about, but he just did, yeah, it's just, it's just him. Let me see what he wrote here. Yeah, yeah. This is like two things mushed together, but yes.
Okay.
Anything, anything at the end of page two here?
No.
Okay. All right, so there's more of the definitions, which we're going to change the section, which also means that section three will become section two, which I'll have to, I'll just renumber those. But let me just write that. Actually, all the sections will have to be renumbered. I'll just make a note to myself. But this is all the bag stuff, and we agree that biodegradable bag will be removed, otherwise this is everything.
Tom. I mean, I think once we get that, the new language sorted out, and we, we just, we just get a thumbs up on it, I think we'll be good to go.
Okay, and then this, this is all the, basically, this is the meat of the, of the ordinance and the enforcement. And again, oh, well, this is the gen, the generalities of everything.
Right.
I mean, just sort of on a high level, is there anything in here? Because everything I'm seeing is, you know, just making that so that the legalese works. Was there any point where he said like, oh, you can't do this or you should do this this way instead? Any like substantial changes like that?
I didn't speak to him, but I didn't, I mean, Salem, you didn't get that impression. Did you?
No, not, not really. It was more like, you know, maybe you should use this term or, you know, this seems like very specific, you know. So it didn't seem like there was any major problems as far as the legality. It was more, it was more semantics.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, and for, you know, and like, most of this, Tom, you know, was, I worked off pre-existing language that probably has been used in multiple municipalities. So I, I'm assuming he probably, I mean, obviously, for instance, he like did some research because he know what, he knows what Cambridge did. So he probably looked at some pre, I'm guessing he looked at some pre-existing ordinance and said, you know, this, this is, this looks kosher.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we're dealing with the same thing with the charter review where there's a ton of language and, you know, where it's just, oh, the way you put that could be confusing, this is better. That I have not just felt the need to really, I mean, I'll take his word on that stuff, you know, the places where I really am interested is like, you know, does this do a different thing than we wrote it to do?
Right.
Right, right. Oh, it was interesting, just as an aside here, oh, that's right, we removed a lot of things here, I remember. I don't know if you saw that the reminder is delivered in supposedly eco-friendly bags?
Oh, are they, are those eco-friendly?
That's what they said. Someone posted something about that, which is good because we, I think we had talked about that.
Yeah.
There's still not to be.
It's sitting at the bottom of my driveway. I don't know how eco-friendly it is.
I was going to say, they're still not supposed to be thrown at the bottom of the driveway.
No, we, we wrote that ordinance years ago, and it was, you know, basically stated that they had to put it on your, on your door. So, and, and it's interesting, the way we wrote it, we didn't want to, we didn't want to punish the people that were delivering it, so we wrote it so the fine would go to the, the sponsoring organization. But that's not being enforced right now, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, that's a whole other discussion, but.
Because it's not on our agenda.
Yeah, yeah. So I have to just renumber these things. I'll, you know, I'll go through and like kind of tidy these up, and I know that Barbara definitely will, so.
Yeah.
Anything on here that jumps out at you guys? We're good?
No, looks fine.
Okay, and then, this is, the, we just, you know, we agreed, we make three levels of offense, well, a warning and then a hundred, two hundred, three hundred.
Yep.
And then potential with inability to renew licenses if there's outstanding fines. I'll, I'll write that up and send it to you, like I said.
Done.
And then two, maximum of two deferments. I think that's it.
Yep, I think, I think that's it too.
Let me, I just want to see, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, good.
Do we need to make any motions in terms of accepting this with, or?
I think, just for clarity sake, I think we should probably motion this to bring to the full council with those, with those revisions.
No, just one thing I just remembered, guys.
Yeah.
Sorry. When it comes to the hardship thing, I, we should probably go back and just check that meeting, but I'm kind of remembering that what we decided on is to not limit the number of hardship applications because if somebody has like a specific product, like we were talking about dry cleaning bags, and if like, if that never gets developed, then they just, they, it would be weird to find them, you know?
Yeah, I, I remember that.
That is true, that they just have to document it each time and keep going through the process. You're right. I think we initially were going to limit it, and then we came to that conclusion.
It was kind of the, the trade-off where we, we limited the number of things that were exempted from it.
Right.
Right.
We then said, you know, that if, that if you, if you have a problem, just get a deferment.
And then it's subject to approval. So if there is a product that exists and they're like, and an applicant, an applicant is like, oh, I don't have, there's no, there's nothing available that replaces this cup, and then, well, there is, then that would be grounds to reject their deferment.
Right.
So, okay, I, that, that sounds good to me.
I think, I think that, that makes sense. And now that you said that, Tom, I, I remember that, that that's what we had discussed, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, and it says, showing that the circumstances justifying the hardship to continue, include all information necessary for the board to make a decision on the deferment, so that's all in there. So, yeah, I think that's fair, and you're right.
That's good.
Okay. All right, well, then I'd like to make a motion to accept, to send this to the City Council for a public hearing with accepting the, the changes we discussed and making the amendments as discussed in this meeting.
Okay. Do we have a second? All right, so we have a motion in a second to send this to the full council for a public hearing incorporating the discussed changes. Tom Peak?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Um, aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes three to zero. So our first meeting in August, this, well, if we, if we do have to have, if we have that new language and we have to have Mark look at it, it might not be ready for the, the second meeting, so maybe, maybe we'll push this to the first meeting in September.
That was my thought as well, especially some of the kind of concerns and provisions that the president had.
Right, and we also have a, a public hearing on the 19th for the small business, ex, ex, how can you say that? It's expediting the small business permits. So, yeah, so that makes sense, great.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll do that. Now, we, we still have, so just, we have the expedited business permits thing, and Tom and I did vote to, to send it to the full council, so, you know, it is on our agenda. So I, you know, just to give you an update, we discussed kind of the merits and the drawbacks of it, and, you know, it, it seemed like in order to help people reuse some of the empty spaces in town, it would make sense to save them money because they would have to do two legal advertisements, which would cost, you know, three, over $300, and then they would be at least two months of waiting for the, the gears to kind of crawl. And the biggest, the biggest, and Tom, feel free to jump in, but I think the biggest kind of question was what is a significant alteration? And so we talked about like significant alterations to the exterior of the building would be grounds for them not having expedited process, but if someone was just going to do some interior work like painting and maybe changing around the interior, then that wouldn't necessarily classify as substantial renovation.
So like, no moving walls or anything like that, just like?
Well, you know, even, I mean, we did kind of talk about that, like, we talked about like adding a kitchen. And, and it was, there was a little bit of back and forth, but I think the sentiment kind of ended up being, you know, in order to, to make this process more business friendly, that something like that, they would have to get other permits anyway. So why bog them down with this one particular permit that's going to take longer? You know, they're going to have.
The other thing that they sort of, the, the other thing they, they sort of mentioned was, from the planning board's perspective, since those are just like site, site approval, permit approval things, is not a special permit or anything like that, they really don't generally have grounds to reject those things. And even if like a lot of neighbors were upset about it, they would probably not reject such a thing. And so it's kind of a formality anyway. And if the, if what, if the way that you're interacting with it from the street is not really changing, you know, it's a different thing if they're going to put in, you know, a courtyard out back or something like that, but if the space is just a, you know, I mean, a lot of it is like, you know, if a bookstore decides to become a florist, like, well, who cares? You know?
Yeah, and I guess a lot of the stuff we're talking about is more building inspector territory than planning department in regards to.
Right.
Yeah.
Or the fire department might get involved, or the Board of Health, or there's any number of different things, but most of those don't involve a public hearing that you have to advertise in the newspaper. And that's the big thing is that, you know, you're. And that's the big thing, is that, you know, you're basically charging three hundred dollars and, um, for, for legal advertisements, and then delaying things two months, months for a hearing where you really can't say no unless there's like a, a reason that would probably get flagged somewhere else in the process.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So, yeah, so that, that was basically, um, you know, a quick summary of, of what happened, but we did, uh, and the planning board also voted affirmatively to, to move it to us. Um, so I, I just wanted to make sure that you, uh, had, had a little bit of knowledge on that, so. Um, and then the other piece, um, was, we did not finish, was the cannabis and the highway business, um, whether, you know, new construction or not. Uh, and it, it was, uh, uh, we had a, a potential, you know, which I, I had actually no clue that there was any interest in that Cernac, Cernac property. Um, but it seems like there now, there was, you know, potential, uh, people that want to go into the Cernac property, and they were, uh, you know, questioning how that, this change came to be, because, you know, now we have two potential, um, developments vying for the same area, which then with the two hundred foot, uh, buffer would prevent one of them from going in, so that just complicated things a little bit.
Well, and as our, I actually, so I actually spoke to the, um, the owner of, uh, the, the proposed Cernac, uh, dispensary. And his concern was that the other establishment was advertising that they were up, gonna be operating within the existing ordinances, which at this time is not true.
Right.
Because they, they, you know, at this time, we, there, there's, you're not allowed to build a new cannabis, cannabis establishment in the highway business district, and he had concerns about that, which I frankly don't disagree with. Um, and then there is the buffer, and so, that's up to the planning department though, in regards to, you know, it's first come for serve.
Yep.
And that's kind of what.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's kind of what I, what I said is, you know, and I, I'm worried I might have come off a little rude in the meeting, because just the whole thing was a little, uh, overwhelming for a moment. But, sort of what I was saying was, you know, like, I, I'm really sympathetic to that situation, and if he thinks that they're doing something wrong, that's something that he should take up with the city, and, and maybe he's right, or I don't know. But, um, you know, when we write zoning, what we should be writing about is what sort of uses we think are appropriate. And that's, it, it's, it's tough, I, I, I need to give it a little bit of thought, but there, there's a question in my mind about whether it's appropriate for us to be considering. I mean, I guess we do have to consider the impact on individuals and businesses of our decisions. But when it, when it's a situation like this, where I don't, I don't know, like, the, 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 it seems like the process questions that, that he's bringing up, I, I, I like, I, I feel for the situation, like, that sounds really frustrating, and, and, and I think he should, he should bring that up to the, with the city, but I, I'm not sure that a discussion about what sorts of uses we are allowing in the highway business district is necessarily the appropriate place to litigate that.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think you're right, Tom.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and also, like, we don't, I mean, honestly, like, I knew that there was some interest in that particular parcel, but I never saw, I've never seen a plan, I don't know the name of the company. Like, I literally know nothing, which I think is probably appropriate for us in our position to not know anything about these companies. Um, so, like, he said something about a community outreach meeting that they did, and I don't know anything about that.
I know that it happened, but I didn't.
Right.
Enter anything.
And, and so, um, but that's kind of, that a community outreach meeting isn't within the purview of our, uh, litigating a zoning issue necessarily. Yeah, Owen?
Yeah, I just happened to attend that community outreach meeting, it was tonight.
Oh, okay.
And so, I told him that the city council doesn't have really any role in this stuff, I was just attending, you know, because I am mostly as a member of the public, I do have a role in the city, but I was mostly just taking an interest because I want to see what's happening in the city, and I, you know, I made it very clear to him that, you know, all of this, all of the procedures fall to the planning department, that, you know, we don't really play a role there, and you know, as it stands right now, there's potentially two applicants, and one is con- con- completely within the realms of the ordinance to apply, that's a Cernac property, and there might be another one who currently, the ordinance does not allow them to, so.
Right.
But that's not our purview.
Right.
So.
So anyway, so that was a little interesting, but it might be, um, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna probably, I think we're in the right place, the way we're thinking about this, um, but it is, there is now this new kind of piece in the mix that is gonna, you know, change the dynamic a little bit, so just, you know, be aware.
The other thing, um, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Tom.
I feel like I keep cutting you off.
No, you don't, you're fine.
Um, the other thing, there was one, it, like, it, I don't want to, I, I mean, we can, we can discuss this a little bit here, right, I mean, this is a.
Yeah, it's on our agenda.
Um, there was one thing that was said, and I don't know how I feel about this yet, but it's, it's interesting to me. Um, which is, uh, one of the members of the, uh, of the planning board, uh, brought up this idea that, does it make sense for us, and I, I don't know how I feel about this, but it's just an interesting way that I hadn't really looked at this before, does it make sense for the city to restrict, um, these establishments to pre-existing buildings specifically as an incentive to get those buildings redeveloped? Which is to say that if, if we, if they could have just built building, built new buildings all, all along, would they have just done that, and we'd have a bunch of empty mill and warehouse and whatever space? Um, I don't know if that's true, but to, before that, there was nothing in my mind that it was just like, well, why not, anyone else can do it, they can do it, but why? Um, you know, why shouldn't they be able to? Why, why did we even talk about this to begin with? And, and that to me is like, okay, these are big, well-capitalized companies that are coming in looking for large spaces, and we have a lot of, like, it's hard to find somebody who wants to redevelop a car dealership. Is, is there, is there something there where this actually, you know, it, maybe it's still unfair to the industry, and maybe that's why we shouldn't do it, but it is, it should, that was a point that I've been sort of just thinking, I keep coming back to, I don't know.
Interesting, Owen, did you raise your hand?
Owen. Well, that's an interesting point, but I would think that then like, and we keep coming back to this, like, is there, does it mean you should put, I mean, should we put a moratorium, I mean, if you want to go down that road, should there be a moratorium on any new construction in the highway business district to encourage full use of existing buildings? I mean, I hear what you're saying, and it's, huh, it's a good, it's a, it's a brain twister.
Yeah. Well, and it, it's also, it's something that we, that was, that was a, a really intentional thing that we did in the mill industrial district. Um, because we wanted the mill buildings to be reused, right? It's, 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 it makes a little bit less sense in the highway business district as there's less like, property that's sitting dormant, um, that has the potential to be reused in that particular way, or any particular way for that matter, I mean, like, if you look at the Feadors, they did not reuse that building, they, you know, which is the old Pontiac place, where it'd be next to Cap'n Jack's, they ripped it down. Um, and I don't know, like, I think environmentally, it probably would have made more sense for them to, to keep the building, but, but it, they probably didn't keep it for a reason.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, I mean, it is, I, I feel like if we had like a tract of, like, you know, old mills that could, are just kind of big boxes that could be reused in a bunch of different ways, maybe that would be a more of an incentive. But right now, it's, you know, we have one, uh, I'm trying to think of that, that particular tract of, uh, you know, when we look at highway business, there's, there's Cernac, and then on the other end of town is, you know, the old, um, asbestos company where, is it, who had their community outreach tonight, is that Apicow?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's where they would be doing their, their grow, and, and, you know, so they are, which is great, because, you know, that's a, that's a old warehouse, that literally is, is perfect for reusing as a, um, as a grow. Um, because, you know, it's just a big open building. Uh, so I don't know, I mean, I, I hear, I hear that, but I, I think that with what we, what's on the ground right now, it's not super realistic.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, that's just.
I don't necessarily disagree, I just, that was the first point that I was like, maybe I need to think about that a little bit.
It is a good point, and, and that was, that was our, you know, explicit intention for the mills, which is like, we have to get these reused, we don't want them to be torn down, like, you know, we gotta get these filled with something, so. Um, but anyway, so that, we continued that one, Owen, so we're, we're gonna, that's gonna stay on our plate for a while. Um, and, oh, well, I mean, I, I, I believe it's, um, we continue the meeting to, Tom, do you have it on top of your head? Is it August eighteenth?
Okay.
Sounds right.
Let me, I, I can check it for you, Owen, I, I want to make sure that you know, I, I don't want to, um, yeah, so we have, um, August eighteenth at six, it's a Tuesday, and it's before our nineteenth meeting, obviously.
Let me just double check, um, I mean, it doesn't, the eighteenth. Cool, I'm available.
Oh, nice, good.
Yeah.
Yay.
Yeah. Awesome.
Um, and let's, if you guys want to talk about engine brakes, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, to keep this one short and, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, I did get a communication about engine brakes.
Okay.
Just for the record, um, sorry, I'm just writing this, uh, planning meeting down. Uh, but I don't know who it was from, so I can't comment more on it.
Okay.
It was from like, a cell phone number sent to my email. Um, it, and I responded to ask them, you know, just to clarify with a name and address. And it was basically just asking us where we were with this, that the noise is still loud, and what's happened with the signs, but I, I, they didn't respond.
Okay. Well, it, I, I actually had some correspondence on that too, uh, Mike Mishon, the owner of, um, the Mill One Eighty building in One Ferry Street, was, um, talking about what he had noticed on Ferry Street, um, from his work, you know, rehabbing, that there was a lot of trucks coming, maybe Palmer Paving, or, I don't know, something like that. And he said, oh yeah, can we have an engine brake ordinance, um? And then another thing is, construction of the new, a couple of, from my neighborhood have complained, um, because these giant trucks are coming through loaded, coming down the South Street Hill, and they're, and, and you can hear them pretty clearly, all the way up, you know, pretty far away, but, that being said, you know, um, enforcement is really the, the key piece here, so. Um, and maybe what I'll do is I'll reach out to, um, Officer Ross, and, and see, because that was kind of where we left it, was, he was gonna step up. And I've seen him pull over a couple trucks since then, so, it'd be interesting to see where, um, you know, where he's at, yeah, go ahead, Owen.
Yeah, and I mean, I've just been more, you know, observant of the trucks in the city, and, and, and kind of like, with the comments that, that Sergeant Ross had made at our meeting, and I can't tell if they're actually using engine brakes, or if it's just downshifting in the sound of the exhaust from the downshift, um, because the way he made it sound is that the engine brakes are actually silent. Um, like, I know if I downshift in my truck, that there's a subsequent, like, feedback, for lack of a better term, in the exhaust, so I don't really know, and then what you said is exactly true, like, how, like, the trucks will pass through and be gone, I don't know how we'll enforce this, like, I don't disagree with our residents that this is a total nuisance, but I don't know, A, if what they're experiencing is really engine brakes, and B, like, how, I don't know how this will, I mean, other than putting like, signs up that just like, I, I don't know how we would do this.
I mean, that's what Holyoke does, they, I mean, it's, it's interesting, in Holyoke, the sign says, warning, engine brakes prohibited, that's it. It doesn't say, and I would venture to guess that Holyoke doesn't have too many, uh, engine brake citations they issue. I'm just a, that's just a wild guess, but, uh, it'd be interesting to find out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just, sorry, Owen, you were saying something.
Go ahead, Tom.
I, I kind of just said my piece, so go ahead.
It, I, I would just keep, coming back to me is that it seems like where these things are actually loud, to the point that it's upsetting people, the, what a lot of people who are familiar with trucks seem to be saying, I don't know, you know, I don't have any expertise on this, is that it's these trucks that have these modified mufflers that are, that that's what's making the noise, that, you know, trucks with modern engine brakes and proper mufflers, you can use your engine brake and it's not making a ton of noise.
Right.
And if that's the case, then it seems like we're talking about something that's already illegal under state law. And that the issue is how to, um, i- 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 is just, uh, really, uh, how, how do we get our, our scarce resources in the police department to enforce this, you know, properly? Um, because, and like, it just seems like, uh, what I, what I'd be, yeah, what I continue to be really nervous about is the idea where you've got something that's already illegal, and we're trying to make a broader category of things illegal, including some things that are like, not bad and might actually be good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I, I, I know that might be an unpopular opinion with some people, but like, you know, that, that's just, I, I, I do think that's something we just need to continue to be thoughtful about, is would, would that be helping, you know, because it sounds like if, if someone's making all that racket, like, and an officer is observing that, they can already pull them over and cite them right now.
Yeah.
For their non-compliant muffler. And so, if the issue is that, you know, so if, if we add this, added this engine brake ordinance, like, those same people would be exactly as ticketable as they are right now, but there'd be this other class of people who might actually not be creating a problem for anyone.
Right.
Like, could be ticketable. Um, that just, that continues to be my concern there.
Owen.
Yeah, I agree with Tom, and also kind of wondering that would the people who are currently, including myself for that matter, because I live on one of, I live on one of these, you know, byways where it's there's a lot of loud trucks and stuff, and most of that has to do more with speeding and just overall noise from big trucks, but if there wasn't ordinance, and we were expecting enforcement, and the enforcement thereof was almost impossible, would people feel even more frustrated? Like, well, we have a law about this, why, how come nothing's happening? And, you know, we could circle back with, like you said, with Sergeant Ross, and say, look, can you stake out these places and talk to the truck companies more, and, and maybe just enforce more like, like, uh, Counselor Peak was saying, I don't know.
I, I mean, it, I think it makes sense, I, I think before, like, because I, Tom, I absolutely agree with you, and, um, and, and this is one of those issues where I, I think universally, it doesn't get a lot of enforcement. But you see a sign when you go into a city every once in a while, and is that, is that really a deterrent, I don't know. Um, so let's, let's circle back to, to, um, Officer Ross, and then we'll, uh, um, decide whether we want to keep this, or whether we want to move forward. Makes sense?
Works for me.
Perfect, okay. Um, anything else? All righty, well, I guess we can, uh, move to adjourn, if someone wants to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, uh, Tom Peak.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
And I'm an affirmative as well, it was nice seeing you guys, hopefully we'll see you around soon, thanks for your time.
Be safe.
Yeah, take care.
Bye.